Amen atentites, now lejos at Guam is called to order. I would like to ask Senator Nerissa Underwood if he can lead us in prayer.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Almighty God, we humbly come before you this morning with gratitude in our hearts for your continued protection over our island, for the success of FASPAC 2016, for, Lord, just helping us to meet the challenges of the people of Guam. And so, as we come to you this morning, the opening of this session, Lord, we're just going to ask you to once again guide us. We need your wisdom. We need your spirit to lead us. We need your forgiveness, Lord, when we have fallen short of your expectations. But we know that you are merciful, and for that, we are grateful. So, Lord, as we come to you, we also lift up to you the other leaders, our governor, lieutenant governor, the executive branch. We lift up to you, oh Lord, the judiciary. We lift up to you the rest of the government of Guam that serve your people. And most of all, Lord, we lift up to you, the people of Guam. As we bask in your blessings, Lord, we remember all those who are suffering as a result of the attack, Lord, and our LGBT community. Lord, we come to you with sadness and just a bit of fear that the same thing could happen to us. But, Lord, right now, it's not about us. We lift up to you the victims, their family, their friends, and all of those have been affected by this. Father God, you have told us that we are part of one body. When one part gets attacked, the rest of us suffer. So, Lord, please help us. Please help us to humbly come to you every day as your leaders, to ask you for guidance, to ask you to forgive us, and to ask you, Lord, to please just help us to remember, Lord, your commands, which is to love one another as you have loved us. And we ask all this, Lord, in Jesus' mighty name.
Thank you very much, Senator. Can Senator San Nicolás please lead us in the recitation of the Inefresi? In mastakluk de jinasoku, in mastaklum gikorasanhu, dan imaspeyeh nyanashinyahu, uufesen maesetu parabai hubertehi dehu defendi ijenenge ikochura ilenguahi iaidi ihanum denitamut chomor. Niere nshaku di retu genetsu statha, espihu at fitni kachih lu biblia, dan ibanderahu ibandera in Guam. Thank you, Senator. In the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro, is Senator Tony Adet, you can lead us with that. And the singing of the national anthem is Senator Jimmy Espaldon, you can lead us with that as well.
(Singing) O, chamo, kulu ikadota, anpaima sunan, ganiko luluota. Arai onra, arai toria, abiba is basen para. Arai onra, arai toria, abiba is basen para. O, ikadota, ari ta, dan imanibana bechon. O, kaki ni, ru na parasakura, duu, kote ni, is basan. O, kaki ni, ru na parasakura, duu, kote ni, is basan. O, ikaduta, by the dawn's early light, were so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleam, ooh, crushes and bright stars through the perilous prime. For the red hearts we watched were so gallantly strewn, and the rock is red where the waters steered, gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. O, say it does have our spaniel that never get away, for the land of the free and the whole of the rain.
Thank you, senators. I would like to ask the clerk if he can please take roll call.
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tony Adda. Senator Uggan. Senator Blaz. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator San Nicolás. Senator Torres. Senator Underwood. Speaker Wampat.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the legislative journal dated both April 21st, 2016, as well as May 9, 2016, both subject to correction.
No objections, so ordered.
There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be penned in a session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
There are also messages from Imagalan Guam, and I move for the same.
Objections, so ordered.
And there are reports from standing committees, and I move that these reports be penned in a session journal.
So ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees at this time, but under item 12, Madam Speaker, I move, under one motion, that Bill Number 300-33COR, Bill Numbers 301-33LS to 310-33LS, Bill Numbers 311-33COR to 335-33COR, Resolution Number 338-33COR to 339-33COR, Resolution Numbers 340-33LS to 358-33LS, Resolution Numbers 359-33COR to 393-33COR, Certificate Numbers 129-33LS to 136-33LS, and Certificate Number 137-23COR to 162-23COR, all be given its first reading.
Objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion is I move to excuse those senators not yet present for session.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, at the vice speaker's message at the Committee on Roles meeting yesterday, that he would be moving for an override of his vetoed bill, and at his request, he asked that he be able to do that at the time when all members are present, and so we will go back to motions whenever that time occurs. And so, I just want to advise the body that that's the only time at this point we would be going back to motions for that override attempt.
Okay. And then motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. And so, I moved that any resolution or certificate of commensory or condolence in nature that's introduced for the duration of this session, that it be adopted, it be approved, and that all members be co-sponsors, and that sponsor work with the clerk and the legal counsel in the preparation of those documents.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And just my customary motion, Madam Speaker, to permit you to reorder the second reading file. Whenever a member needs more time, or a question is posed that more time is needed to get the answer for that question, that you be permitted to just manage the second reading file, so we can continue to be expedient on how we handle that process.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
I have several legislative concurrences. The first, from the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement, on the nomination of Oscar A. Calvo to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors with Senator Tom Adda's committee recommendation to do confirm, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
Objections, so ordered.
From your committee, Madam Speaker, on Higher Education, Culture, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, on the nomination of Francisco C. Lozama to serve as a folks art representative of the Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency, with your committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Also, from Senator Tom Adda's committee, on the nomination of Melanie R. Mindiola to serve as a member of the Port Authority Board of Directors, with his committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And again, from your committee, on the appointment of Francisco B. Robon to serve as a folks art representative of Cahab, with a recommendation to do confirm, I move that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And from Senator Tom Adda's same committee, on the nomination of Pasquale Soblon to serve as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, with his committee's recommendation to do confirm, I move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And from Senator Tina Munya Barnes's Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, Historic Preservation, on the nomination of George Asante to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners, with her committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no other motion.
Thank you very much, Senator. On Bill 296-33, Chair recognizes Senator Tony Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make a motion to move Bill 296-33 as substituted by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary to the third reading file. I'd like to speak on it, please.
Okay, one moment. So, it's as substituted?
Yes, Madam Speaker, as substituted.
Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 296-33 is an act to amend Section 601, 09.1B, 8 of Chapter 60 of Title 10, Guam Code annotated relative to the training requirements for the concealed firearms licenses. And what this bill does, Madam Speaker, is that it clarifies the training requirements for those seeking concealed carry firearms license. And subsequent to the enactment of Public Law 32150, which made, which my office had several meetings with GPD personnel and various interest groups on the issues regarding the training requirements of the concealed carry law. And since Public Law 32150 was based on model legislation, it included a provision that allowed Guam train, that the, allowed the training from the Guam Department of Agriculture to suffice for the law's training requirement. However, unlike other jurisdictions, Guam Department of Agriculture does not offer such training. And secondly, the Guam Police Department had informed me that a few applicants are attempting to use online videos, such as the NRA YouTube videos, to meet the training requirements, since there's no prohibition contained in the law. So, upon further research, it revealed that no state, in practice, allows the use of online firearm safety training to suffice for their training requirements. And what it is, is that what we did is, on page two, line 24, "Internet, online, self-study or correspondent courses are not sufficient to satisfy the training requirements" of this subsection. It just goes to tighten up the training requirements, Madam Speaker, for those who are seeking concealed firearms. And it ensures that those individuals go through the proper training, so that they can properly and know how to operate a weapon, and get the proper training that they need. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator. On the motion. Does anyone who would like to spill, speak on the motion on 296? That's up. On the motion, then, to send 296 to the third reading file without any objections? 298, Senator Brent McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to send Bill 298 as introduced into the third reading file and discuss.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 298 is an adoption of the federal FMLA Act. One good thing about Bill 298, Madam Speaker, is we have, I believe we have 13 names on this. It was originally a bill that myself and Senator San Nicolás was invited to work on. I think we received some kind of correspondence last November, so it's been a long time coming. However, after, after speaking with my colleague many months ago, he decided that it was best that I move forward with it and then make him the second co-sponsor, so it could be either way, really. In short, Madam Speaker, this leave act that we are proposing through legislation is basically an adoption of the federal, the FMLA Act. The federal government in their act does encourage states and territories to adopt their own creative leave act that's more tailored towards the individual island or state. And that is exactly what we did. The first thing, we have four main components in this, in this leave act. The first one was, we're trying to adopt our own leave act. So, we're not just going to cut and paste the federal medical leave act, we're going to adopt our own. Second, we all know that the Department of Labor does not look at employees as part-time or full-time. They go by total number of hours. So, what we're doing is, we're taking the 1250, that is the threshold for the medical leave act federally, and we're lowering it to 1,000. We're taking the number of employees from 25 to 50, and the unpaid leave is, is still going to be three months. So, there's not really a lot that we tinkered with. And the bill itself, that was co-sponsored by 12 other people, hasn't been changed, or amended, or substituted. So, and we, I think we received 100% support, no opposition. I have met with, with HR personnel throughout the island in the last couple of months, and there was no opposition, just questions, and we've distributed the bill to all parties that were, were stakeholders and interested in this new law, if it becomes law, and no opposition, all support. So, I hope we get the support from the colleagues as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator San Nicolás, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It was indeed a pleasure to be able to co-sponsor this bill with Senator McCready. What makes it so attractive is that it tailors the Family Medical Leave Act that was established federally for more of our employees to be eligible to participate in what that leave act allows them to be able to take advantage of. And what's, you know, most important, and the reason why we considered this bill carefully is that we have a lot of our employees who are not full-time employees. We have a lot of our employees who do not have, under the federal mandate, do not have any eligibility to be able to make sure that they can use the FMLA rights to be able to keep their jobs while they take care of their sick loved ones, or they address their own health issues. With this bill, we're going to allow a lot of our part-time employees, those employees who accrue about 1,000 hours a year, we're going to allow them to be able to not have to choose between keeping their jobs, or taking care of their sick loved ones, or addressing their own health issues. And, you know, that's something that's, I think, very basic when it comes to the quality of life of our people. And I think it's something that's very basic when it comes to how our community views, what our priorities are here. You know, here on Guam, of course, we do believe in working to earn a living. We do believe in being productive members of society, but we also very much believe in taking care of our health and looking after our loved ones. All of us have experienced accompanying a loved one to get health care treatment elsewhere, or staying home to help care for a loved one. And it's just very sad when certain employees are able to use their FMLA because they have more hours than other employees who are not able to avail of FMLA. And a lot of our people work in part-time jobs. A lot of them don't bring in the same number of hours that the federal statute would allow for them to be able to take advantage of. And so, this lowers the number of hours, and it makes it available for part-time employees. And so, now, you know, the, the part-time employee is able to take care of their loved one. And there's something that we need to remember, Madam Speaker, and that is that, you know, if you don't accrue the required number of hours in your single employer, you won't be able to avail of the leave under the federal statute. Now, you could be a part-time employee, and you can have three jobs. You can have three jobs, working 3,000 hours a year, which is time and a half of what a full-time employee is putting in, and yet, under the federal statute, you would not be eligible for FMLA, because you're not accruing the aggregate number of hours necessary under any single employer. So, imagine that. Our hardest-working people who are working three part-time jobs just to be able to provide for their families, and take advantage of every available job opportunity out there, and if they get sick, or when their family members get sick, they're going to lose all three of those jobs, because they're not going to be able to take FMLA for a month to be able to take their child out for chemotherapy. Those are the people that we really need to be protecting in our community, Madam Speaker, the ones who are willing to take on any job and do whatever it takes in order to put food on the table. They should not have to choose between holding their loved one's hand in the hospital or being at work. We at least need to avail them the opportunity to be able to have that much human dignity. And that's what Bill 298-33 does. I would also like to credit the, the main sponsor for further expanding it to include school-related leave, because that way, the parents can go to parent-teacher conference. We want parental involvement, and yet, we don't create the opportunities for it. This creates that opportunity for it, for the part-time employee. A lot of our at-risk students are the ones whose parents are never home, because they're working all the time. Let's at least give them the opportunity to participate in the education of their child the way we all want them to. Every educator will tell you, we want more parental involvement. Not enough parents are coming to parent-teacher conference. A lot of our kids in public school, Madam Speaker, are the children of parents who can't afford the private school. They're the parents who are working the three jobs. And it's no wonder they can't go to the parent-teacher conference. And then, we wonder about student achievement, and then, we wonder about test scores. We wonder about why students are acting out. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, we go out there and we appropriate all this money to try and create all these programs to try and address at-risk youth, when the reality is, maybe the parent just needs some leave to be able to go to parent-teacher conference, to be able to know what their child is learning, so they can sit down and help them with their homework, so they aren't getting Fs, so they don't feel like failures in school. It could be something that simple. So, I'm very honored to be a co-sponsor of Bill 298. But more importantly, Madam Speaker, Bill 298 doesn't provide any direct financial burden to, on our private sector. We're not telling them to give paid leave. We're just saying, if your employees are within this hourly threshold, you can go out and give them leave to be able to do what they got to do based on what the act requires. So, we're not going to be creating any kind of environment necessarily where employers are going to be having to pay employees when they're not going to be at the job site. All they're going to have to do is manage their, their work schedules that, hey, you know what? I have this one part-time employee, she's going to have to be out for a month because her child is sick, so I'm going to have to adjust the work schedule to be able to cover. Because after she's done using her leave, she's going to be able to come back and get her job back. We're not going to be causing any kind of extreme harm to the private sector. They'll have to manage it a little bit more, you know, and that's to be expected. But when our employees are also afforded that greater dignity, I think that you're going to see a lot more productivity out of your employees. And so, if you're one of those part-time employers who has one of those real hard-working employees, who has three part-time jobs, and if you were probably willing to give them leave, but one of the other two employers weren't, you're not going to have to suffer as a result of that employee's morale dropping because they had to choose one or the other. Now, regardless of whether you're a good employer or not, you're all going to have to give them at least some leave to be able to take care of sick loved ones, or be able to address education needs that, you know, we all share in this community. So, I fully support Bill 298. I'm grateful that we have so many of our colleagues signed on to support this. I think that when we do this, we're going to see a lot more participation at schools. We're going to see loved ones being cared for, and we're going to see a, just a greater improvement in the, in the overall morale and sense of dignity in our community. And that's always something that we should be mindful of, and when we can do it at a minimal cost, I mean, there's really no reason why we shouldn't. So, I'm very grateful that my name is on this bill. I'm definitely going to be voting yes on this, and I urge all of my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anybody else would like to speak? Senator Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I did sign on to this piece of legislation in support of the premise that it puts out there in terms of allowing employees within the private sector to be able to take some time off to care for loved ones who may have some medical issues, or even to take time out to attend some meetings or conferences for, in support of their children at school. I guess one of the things, though I do, I have taken notice of, and the previous speaker did speak to it, was the issue of lowering the threshold in terms of how much, how many hours of service the employee would need to meet in the previous 12 months for the employer. Federally, and even locally, gov-guam-wide, the, the floor on that is not 1,000 hours, it's 1,250 hours. And I think to remain consistent with that figure, and I'm sure there were studies done as to why they reached that figure, in my mind, it seems to be that it might come close to working at least a little bit more than half, half the time. A full-time employee, I think, works about 2,000-some hours. And so, I kind of would like to reexamine the, that, that threshold of 1,000 hours, which is lower than the federal minimum, which is 1,250 hours. And even though the, the representation was made that it would really not cost the private sector employers any money or any extreme stress, I would have to at least beg to differ to a degree that, when you're talking part-time employees, and I, and again, I know, and I'm related to people who hire part-time employees, it's very hard to fill some of those positions, especially if we're granting them the ability to take up to 12 weeks, three months off. And so, I think even that needs to be earned, right? We shouldn't be so liberal in terms of making a determination that it should be lower than the federal standard, and that it should be lower than the gov-Guam standard of 1,250 hours. With that, Madam Speaker, I would like to take a look at page two and make the motion on line 10 to change the figure from at least 1,000 hours to be consistent with federal law, and get it up to 1,250 hours. And that would be my motion at this time, Madam Speaker. On page two, line 10, change it from 1,000 hours to 1,250, to remain consistent with the federal law.
1,000. 1,250?
Yes, ma'am.
On the amendment, Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As the previous speaker before the last speaker spoke, Senator Siniklis. That's the whole purpose for the introduction of this bill. The Federal Medical Leave Act has a threshold of 1,250 hours. But within that leave act, because they realize we have thousands of workers on Guam that work part-time, within that leave act, they encourage territories like ourselves to move that number to a lower threshold. So as Senator Siniklis had mentioned, this is for part-time employees. I believe that loyalty in the workplace goes both ways. The owner, and the employee, and the employer. If you work 1,000 hours at your job, and your wife, on that 1,001 hour, gives birth, I, as an employer, should have the decency to say, "Go be with your wife and your newborn And when you come back, you will continue to have your job because I value your employment here. Now, if the employer does not have that decency, that is where this law would come into effect. And this legislature would have that decency to say that part-time employees have medical issues with family members, and part-time employees' wives gives birth. This is minimal for a part-time employee to get three months off for the birth of a child. Minimal. Nobody in this branch of government, or any branch of government, would argue with that. So I understand wanting to leave the 1,250, but then there would be no reason for the bill. And that's the whole purpose of the bill, is to allow these part-time employees to take time off for medical leave. So I respectfully object to the amendment, and I really, I implore my colleagues to keep it at 1,000 hours. If they read the entire Medical Leave Act, the Federal Medical Leave Act, they do encourage us to change it, and to make it a little more creative into what we're trying to accomplish. And that is exactly what we're trying to do. So, thank you, and I would also ask my colleague who amended it if he would consider withdrawing that amendment and moving forward on the bill. Thank you very much.
On the amendment, Senator Siniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to clarify what we're discussing here. The bill authorizes the FMLA to be allowed for employees who've put in 1,000 hours of service during the previous 12-month period. So just so that we're clear, it's not like you can go get your part-time job, and then right when you get your part-time job, you're going to go out and take leave. You know, this is for employees who've been working for at least 12 months and who've accrued 1,000 hours in the job. As the retiring speaker said, you know, the point of having 1,000 hours as opposed to 1,250 hours is because if you're a part-time worker, working half the number of hours as a full-time worker, you would be accruing about 1,040 hours a year. Full-time is 2,080 hours. So, half of that is 1,040. And so, what we're basically going to do with this amendment is we're going to say, you know what? If you're a part-time employee working 20 hours a week as opposed to the 40 hours a week, you're still not going to be eligible for FMLA. So every single employer who employs all these people who only accrue 20 hours a week, which is the classic part-time employee, none of them will be eligible for this. That employee would need to be a special kind of employee who's accruing 1,250 hours. And then we run into those unscrupulous employers who are going to be keeping track of every single hour, and who are going to say, hey, you know, yeah, they're tracking at 1,249 hours. You know, Madam Speaker, we have employees on this island who work 38 hours a pay period just so they stay under that threshold of full-time, because once you're full-time, you're eligible for all the full-time benefits. That's the sad reality of, you know, this world we live in. But at least in this reality that we're dealing with with this legislation, we can say that it's going to be policy on this island, that if you are a traditional part-time employee working half of what a full-time employee is working, you're going to get, at the very least, unpaid leave. Unpaid leave. They're still going to have to choose whether they're going to be able to bring them a paycheck or hold their loved one's hand, but at least they're not going to have to choose between whether they're going to keep their job or lose it. And that's all this bill does. If you are a loyal employee in your company, you work for 12 months, you are a part-time employee, and you put in your 1,000 hours, and your kid got sick, you're not going to get fired if you take a little unpaid leave to do what you got to do. Yes, the federal standard is 1,250 hours. Why do they do that? I don't think it's because of some kind of overarching grand wisdom. I'm sure that there are interests in the federal Congress who are trying to protect business interests and don't want to go all the way down to where we're going, because then all the part-time employees will be eligible. And of course, you have those interests out there federally, big donors, large employers, who say 1,250 is much more attractive to me. The federal government can sometimes give us a good place to start, but when it comes to Guam, and what we value here, and what we really think is important, I really believe that if you are a traditional part-time employee, a loyal employee who was able to keep their job for 12 months, which is usually somebody who's surpassed the probationary period, the company has invested in them, they know and they have skills on how to perform their they should be able to have the protections. So I really object to this amendment, Madam Speaker. I really think that we should take this step. If we can do it better than the feds for a change, by all means, let's do it better. This is better for our people. This is better for our sick. This is better for our parents who have kids in school. This is better for our system. It's not too disruptive. If it creates some kind of havoc, we can always come back and bump it back up to the federal level. But I really believe that this is the appropriate thing to do for the people that we share this island with, and our brothers and sisters who hold all these part-time jobs and keep our service industry and our tourism industry going. Madam Speaker, that's where a lot of these people are in. There are waiters, there are hotel employees, So if they're going to be part-time, let's at least make sure that it's the law of this land, that if something were to happen, if someone were to get sick, or if you wanted to put more time into their education, that you're going to be able to do so and not lose your job. Plain and simple. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Spalding, would you like to close?
I appreciate whether the arguments were against my amendment, and I fully understand. However, I need to at least make mention that those arguments, at least portions, are really a great area of argument. In other words, if one argument goes, well, if you reach 1,001 hours, I mean, if we're in the past, 1,250, and if you don't meet, I mean, if you don't meet that, then... Oh, thank you, Madam Speaker.
You would start all over again?
Well, in essence, Madam Speaker, I'm not really sure. I mean, I appreciate the arguments that were made against my amendment. I do. I fully understand what they're saying. However, I believe within those arguments, they made some very general comments as to why 1,000 hours sticks, or should stick, as opposed to what is really now the standard at 1,250, right? Whether or not there is a cost, we're assuming that there is no real cost and no massive heartache to employers who would have to then be able to shuffle their schedules around, and then, on top of it, hold that position for three months at a maximum, right, until that part-time employee comes back. The question then becomes, if you're the employer, do you, you know, what do you do? Right? Do you hire somebody temporarily to fill that spot? Do you, and then after three months, say, well, your time is up? You got to go now? And again, I'm not against the concept of the bill. What we're arguing right now is just the number of hours to qualify to be able to take advantage. One of the arguments out there is like, well, if you're holding three part-time jobs, you'll never qualify for that 1,000 hours. And that may be true. And yes, do I know some people who work three part-time jobs? Yes. Right? However, again, that's not the norm. The norm of part-time jobs, you usually hold a full-time... I know a lot of people who actually hold a full-time job and then a part-time job. I know a lot of people who hold two part-time jobs just to make that 40 hours. So when we start talking about the three part-time jobs, even though those do exist, again, the standard is at 1,250. I understand, you know, one of the arguments is like, well, if your wife is having a child, and you don't meet that criteria, then, you know, you don't have that time to take off. Right? Well, the argument, you know, because if we raise that standard, the argument can be made that, okay, well, the same holds true, that if you only work 999 hours and you have a child, that still holds true, that you can't go. I mean, so that argument, to me, is just a matter of working the statistics and saying, well, you know, at 250, it's too high. 1,000 is about right. But the argument was that if you go to 250, 1,250, and then they only make 1,249, that that person won't be able to go and be with his wife during childbirth. I would have to disagree, because I think all employers, you know, for the most part, or if anything, at least most employers, understand the importance of the moment when somebody gives birth, when their wife is giving birth. They're allowed, they're normally allowed to say, hey, I'm having a child today, I'd like to be by my wife's side. And usually, it's granted. It doesn't take a law for an employer to say, yes, let's do this. But the issue that we're discussing now, right now, is just that threshold. What is that threshold? So the argument that if we make only 1,249 hours because we've increased that minimum doesn't really wash, right? Because the same argument can be made that those who work only 999 hours, according to the way this bill is proposing, at 1,000, still doesn't qualify that person. So to me, that argument is a non-argument, because now we're just playing with numbers and playing with scenarios under different timeframes, right? Another argument that's made, that was like, well, if you're a traditional part-time loyal employee, right, then the employer should definitely give that person the opportunity to be with a loved or sick one. Loyal employee, I agree. I totally agree. Right? And I believe there are many situations where, because the employee is very loyal, and because he's dedicated, and because he's a good employee, even if he doesn't meet the threshold of 1,250 hours, the employer will say, hey, this guy's been loyal to me, right? I will give him that time off, because I understand. I understand employee morale. I understand the need for families to be together. So to make these kind of arguments based upon just the timeframe, I think, again, can be made also, you know, in reverse. That 1,000 hours, or 1,250 hours, is really not the contemplation of the employer at the time, because we're talking about a solid, traditional, part-time, loyal employee. Now, there are part-time employees, again, who are just there because they need an extra few bucks, and whether the employer has any loyalty to him or not, based upon the type of operation that he runs, again, I think should meet that minimum threshold that has been set nationally. Has the federal government encouraged local jurisdictions? Yes. To maybe conform the law to the individual jurisdiction's needs? Yes. But did it say to lower it? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. And I would like to, again, dispel that notion, that that's what the federal government said, to lower, to take a look at the federal model law, or the federal law, and use that as a model, and then lower the threshold. You know, and whether or not it was to protect big business interests as the claim was made, again, that's pure speculation, right? I just want to be consistent, right? Which is recognized around the country, and even within our own government. 1,250 hours is the standard. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I didn't want to interrupt him, but can I just do a point of information, please? I know you didn't ask a question, but I just wanted to...
Okay, let me take a break.
Okay.
Please.[1596.83]
The chair is back in session, and I know that Senator, you had done a closing, but there was some information provided by the author. Is there anything now that you want to add on to your closing?
From, well, from what I understand from the latest piece of information was that at least seven states have gone below the federal number, maybe even more. But seven states have adopted the 1,000 hours. And if I just want, I just want to be clear as to what we're really dealing with for anybody who might be listening out there. This family leave act, basically, the way it's written right now, is that it says that the, it shall be unlawful employment practice for any employer to refuse to grant a request by an employee with more than 12 months of service with the employer who has at least 1,000 hours of service with that employer during the previous 12 months. So in other words, we're talking about employees. The qualification is the employee must have worked at least 12 months to the, prior to the time that the request is made. The issue that we're discussing is during that previous 12 months last year, say for example, right, he must have worked at least 1,000 hours, half, you know, maybe a part-time job at four hours a day, something like that, four, five hours a day. The federal guidelines basically says 1,250 hours in the previous years, and that really corresponds with almost, I would imagine, a seven, eight-month time period in which that employee was employed during that previous 12 months. So he must have worked those hours. That's the only issue at hand. And again, it's not a real contentious issue in my mind in terms of whether I support this bill or not, the concept of this bill. It's just the number of hours in the previous year that you should have worked to meet that ability to, for the employer to say, okay, I will grant you, I will grant you that leave that you're requesting. And, you know, at, if it's, you know, from the previous year, if he worked 1,250 hours, that probably translates, like I said, maybe about seven, eight months worth of a part-time job as opposed to 1,000, which would be a little less than six months. And again, if we're demonstrating loyalty, and we're talking about loyalty and the, you know, whether this employee is really a valued employee, someone that the employer would like to keep, regardless, I believe, of whether he had worked 1,000 hours or less, I believe that an employer would recognize that because of the type of island we are. Do we need to mandate it at 1,000 hours as opposed to leaving it at the federal standards? I think it's not unreasonable to stay at 1,250. And I understand the arguments that were put out there. But that's my motion, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's an objection, so we're going to call for the vote. All in favor of the Espada amendment, which is then to reduce the number of hours, I mean, increase the number of hours from 1,000 to 1,250 on the amendment. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the amendment. One, two, sorry, the amendment failed. On the main motion, on the main motion, Senator Tommey, do you recognize?
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 29833. Well, I'm one of co-sponsors too. But I do have, I do have some questions, and then maybe if the author can yield and help to maybe clarify some of the points here. So on page three, on sub-paragraph B, it states that this FMLA benefit is really applicable only to employers who employ 25 or more employees. And so then I would have to ask, where do we get this 25-employee threshold? If it's from nationwide, then maybe a small business, you know, nationwide is, is around, employs around 25 individuals. Maybe for Guam, it's a lot less than that. And so maybe if the author can address that and clarify it.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the question. Basically, what we did is we took the Family Medical Leave Act, Federal Leave Act, which is a threshold of 50 employees. And then we compared it to Guam, and that was one of the three major changes, was taking the 50 employees nationally and moving it down because Guam's much smaller with, with a lot of small businesses and made it 25. Now, can you, could you make it lower or higher? I do believe you could make it lower than, than the minimum 50, but we thought 25 was a suffice number. And, you know, if anyone wants to make it lower, I wouldn't have an objection to it. If that's, I think that would, I don't know if he was going in that direction, but.
Thank you. So Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much. So basically, based on that answer, the number 25 came from here. And so I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I don't have that warm and fuzzy that 25 is really representative of our small businesses on Guam. So from the same place that we took 25, I'm going to make the amendment that we make it 12. It's no, I mean, 25 is an arbitrary number, 12 is an arbitrary number, but if we're going to want to benefit as many of the people who are out there, you know, working part-time jobs, working, you know, they're probably working in these small mom-and-pop businesses. And so if we, if we want to be as liberal about it as possible, then make it applicable to companies with 12 employees, that it shall be, the medical, reads, "It shall not be an unlawful employment practice for an employer to refuse to grant a request for family care and medical leave by an employee if the employer employs fewer than 12 employees."
On the added amendment, does anyone like to speak on it? Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In my opinion, that amendment actually makes the bill better. And so I have no objections. That is, that is a good amendment. Thank you.
On the added amendments, does anybody else who'd like to speak on it, which is the reduction of 25 employees down to 12? Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. On page-
Wait, oh, no, and I thought you wanted to speak more on that. So on that amendment, no objection. So order, now you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on page five, there's the definition there of parent. Now, I guess the objective of this, this policy is to provide that employee the opportunity to be able to go take care of a, of someone who is sick in the family, a child, a wife, a parent. Okay, so if, let's say then, but, but it doesn't cover parents-in-laws, parents-in-law. So, you know, my, my wife's parents could be ill, and she needs to take care of them, and no problem, she can, you know, take, do a lot of that stuff, but, but I may be needed, for example, to do some of the heavy lifting, to do the driving, to go do the talking or whatever. But according to the definition of parent, I would not be eligible for this FMLA leave because I am not going to go take care of my mother-in-law as opposed to my mother. So maybe if the author would yield and clarify what was the intent here.
Can I just take a quick, 15-second recess so I can show them?
Take a break. And you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the author has provided clarification. If we take a look at page four, line, line 16 through 18, it defines that leave to care for a parent, spouse, or child of an employee, or that FMLA means leave to care for a parent, spouse, or a child of an employee, or a parent or child of the spouse of an employee who has a serious health condition. So my question then is clarified by that provision. Thank you. Madam Speaker, the final, one final question that I have is, on page 11, it deals with reinstatement. And so it reads that notwithstanding section 3602A, "An employer may refuse to reinstate an employee returning from leave to the same or comparable position if all of the following apply. The employee is a salaried employee who is among the highest-paid 10% of the employers' employees employed on Guam." So I guess if I'm one of the executives in the company and getting paid quite high, then, then that, that would knock me out from this FMLA benefit and protection. And so it just seems rather somewhat, you know, unfair that the guy at the bottom of the totem pole will have the benefit, but the guy, because of the fact that I worked hard, made my way to the top of the totem pole, does not get that benefit. So maybe if the author can, can yield and maybe clarify what was the intent here? Why is the unfairness at the end of the spectrum?
Senator, do you yield to the question? And that's on page 11, on the notwithstanding reinstatement.
Take a quick recess.
Okay, take a recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, so after some discussion with the, with the author of the bill, I think it's reasonable to say that this, this part that I'm concerned with on page 11 applies to the guy who's, you know, really making the big bucks, right? And so that individual, probably in reality, if he has to go take care of, you know, his mother-in-law or his mother or child, will probably more than likely, you know, go and hire somebody to, to go and do that. Okay, but I think on the face of it, you're going to find that individual just wants to be contentious about everything. And we don't want, I don't think we want anything in here that it's, it's going to give somebody reason to go and challenge this, and then we kind of throw the baby out with the bathwater, and the people that we really want to benefit from this is, you know, kind of put in limbo because of this particular provision. So I, I think if, if we remove, we're going to need to, we're going to need to rework on page 11 there, this, this parameters for reinstatement. And I'm, and I don't, I don't know, I would have to look at it closely to see where we need to rework it. But just to take out that inequity, that, you know, I could be the $10-an-hour guy who's got a sick child, that child needs to be taken care of, or I could be a $100-an-hour guy who has a sick child, that person also needs to be taken care of. So don't distinguish between, you know, one other spectrum or the other. So I just want to see an amendment made, and I'm not sure right now how to amend, but to remove that inequity.
All right. The chair will allow you to come back and make the amendment if you can, if you can figure out what, what it is that you want to, to do. The speaker has a question, and so if it's okay, Senator Tom, I will, I will allow you to, to come back on again. So just work out whatever it is that you need, and I'll take the speaker's comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I do have a question, and I don't know whether I should explain first exactly what's written and then ask the question, or the reverse.
Whichever.
Yeah, maybe I should ask the question first, and I'll go back. My question is based on the language on page, I'm looking at page eight, where it says that an employee covered by pension or retirement plan, starting from lines two down, I'm going to read to page, lines 10. So where it says there, "An employee covered by pension or retirement plan may continue to make contribution at his or her own expense in accordance with the terms of the plan during the period of unpaid leave, and the employer may make corresponding contributions." And, and that's fine, but it says "if required in accordance with the plan." Okay, so then that means, and from my understanding with the authors, I spoke with them, that then the, the particular plan then, I guess, would either be those in the private sector and those with the government. Then, if you read further, it says, "But during that time when the employee, the employee rather shall retain employee status with employer, and the leave shall not constitute a break in service for purposes of longevity, seniority, under collective bargaining agreement, or any employee benefit plan." And the benefit plan that, in particular, that I'm asking this question is the retirement plan. Now, my understanding is, is that yes, currently, we do for the government. I can only talk about the government, I can't talk about the private sector because, because I don't know what they offer. But in the government of Guam, at least, my understanding is that there are two plans. And the, the newer plan, of course, will be based on how much they're paying, and, you know, towards their plan will determine then how much they'll be able to get when they do retire. In the government, the old plan is, is different, where, like, and I'll use myself as an example. It's that when I first entered the government of Guam, and I was told that if I continue to work with the government, continue to contribute to the retirement plan, that this is, will be my expected date of retirement. So let's say October 1. However, based on this law, and, and the reason I'm saying this, because there's approximately, maybe 3,000 more employees than the government of Guam who are still in the old plan. So with this bill, and if it becomes law, then I could, in essence, then, once I run out of, of leave, I know the government does provide for leave sharing, but, you know, let's say that there really isn't anybody else who want to, to give me any more leave. Therefore, then, what happens, now I've used up annual leave, sick leave, I have nothing, it's leave then without pay, I cannot continue to contribute to my retirement plan, then in essence, my understanding is, is that I would no longer now be able to retire on October 1 as originally told- October 1st, as originally told to me, should there be no quote-unquote "break in service." And it's not so much that there's a break in service, it's that I have not contributed to my plan. But because this bill says that there will be no break in service, so to speak, I could take it then to court and say, "Well, the law says there really isn't a break in service. Sure, I have not been paying," let's say in this case, "maybe for 90 days, three months later." So I then, I'm told by the retirement office that I can't now retire, or rather, they'll say, normally, they will say prior to this that, yes, I must retire in October, I can retire on October 1st, however, if I'm not making any contribution, then now that would delay my retirement date to, let's say, December. But, you know, well, the law says there's no break in service, therefore, and this is a benefit, my retirement benefit, because I've been contributing. So in essence, then, my other question would be, is that now would this end up being a unfunded mandate to the retirement office now, where I am saying, based on this law, I will retire on October 1st, even though I've not contributed for three months, then the retirement fund will pay then the three months to me regardless, because that's what the law says. So that's my question. I really wish somebody could please answer that question. I tried earlier to call the retirement office to get an answer, and nobody's answering, so maybe with through this medium, maybe they will respond. But can anyone, anyone in this office answer that question? I would appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Did you read?
Do you want to be able to answer the speaker's question?
Mr. Speaker, to our understanding, the only real difference between this bill and the current federal FMLA bill is that we're just lowering the hourly threshold, and then we're adding the education authorizations. But when it comes to the language, like, for example, break in service, it's my understanding that it's consistent with what's already in the FMLA language, and if it is, then it doesn't create any kind of problems, because that's already been in existence. But what I would like for the chair to oblige is, we are going to try and pull the current FMLA statute, just to make sure the language is consistent that way, and if it isn't, that might address the question from the speaker.
Aye.
And I understand that, but then, on page eight, on line six, it says that "if required in accordance with the terms of the plan." So that means then there will be different plans, the government of Guam retirement plan, the old plan, has its own terms as well. So can then the FMLA impose on or overrule what's in the retirement plan?
To answer that question, Mr. Speaker, if we read that particular section she's citing on page eight, on lines four, five, and six, it says, "And the employer may make corresponding employer contributions if required in accordance with the terms of the plan." So if the current, for example, the old plan requires that the employer will continue to make the employer contributions for their member, even if they are on FMLA federal, then it shall also apply on FMLA in this statute. So we're just going to see if it's consistent language with the federal statute, and if it is, then that means that it's already standard practice with the retirement fund, and then we can rest assured that way.
Madam Speaker.
And then again, the law basically speaks to the fact that if the employer agrees, the employer and the employee agrees, that then they may then do the contribution. If not, then the individual goes on leave without pay, is unpaid leave, and that's where, see, that's the argument here. And not, my argument's not about the contribution being made by the employer and employee, it's no contribution that would affect the retirement date, not so much that they can retire, but the retirement date. And then pushing the date back becomes then an unfunded liability to the retirement plan, at least here, with the Gov Guam Plan, the old plan.
Mr. Speaker.
Do you wish to respond?
Please.
Please.
Well, first of all, these are very good questions, because if we're going to be making these kind of changes on our local statute, it's important that we are complying with the federal ERISA requirements, and that's why it's important that we do make sure that we're mirroring as close as possible what's already written in the federal FMLAs, that we can be confident that it's been vetted. As for the statement for it being adding to the unfunded liability, actually, it would be in reverse. If we were to allow people to take leave and to still count those hours towards their retirement without making any kind of contributions, then we would be creating a liability question. But if the way the bill is written is that the amount of time would not be counted, then that would also affect the liability. So, these are very good questions, and I think that the safest way for us to be confident that this thing is already or not already standard practice is just to compare whether or not it's in the existing FMLA federally and consistent with the FMLA here locally. And if it is, then we can rest assured that it's still standard practice, and it conforms with the ERISA requirements on the federal retirement statutes. Mr. Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you for allowing this, you know, back and forth, but I hope then, and I'd like to request is that if we can set this aside, and I really would like to call the retirement office, and I'd like to, at the same time, maybe even call DOA, just to see if there are any employees, if we really have gone and leave without pay. I mean, I know we're saying that there's close to 3,000 in the old plan, and how could this negatively impact on the retirement plan? At least, my understanding as well is that if there are any federal laws that are passed that will be applicable to states and territories, is that we can adopt them, but it just means that we can't over-impose what the federal law is imposing. But my concern in this case is that there is a plan in place, and we all know that the board members of the retirement plan have a fiduciary responsibility to its retirees, and that they're the only board that really has that responsibility, and it's a responsibility that they don't, you know, take, you know, how should I say that? I mean, they take it very seriously, because they, in essence, can be sued versus any other board, and I just want to make sure that it would not be, they would not be affected in terms of having to add another unfunded liability. We surely don't want that.
Thank you. If you or your office can continue to try to reach them and get an answer, and we'll continue with the discussion on the bill if there's anybody else that wishes to, and if there's something that you discover that will affect it, then we can always bring it back up to try to make any amendments. But I'd like to complete the discussion on the bill at this point. Is there any, are there any other senators who, Senator Tom, did you have your amendment ready? All right, Senator, we'll go back to Senator Tom Adet.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So after talking, speaking with the author of the bill, he's in agreement that the amendment that would, I think, address the concerns that I had raised on page 11 would be to delete lines 13 and 14, which really removes that exclusion of the employee who is, you know, among the highest-paid 10% of the employers, employees employed. So, we're just gonna, you know, we're basically gonna make this FMLA applicable to everyone, whether you're a $10-an-hour guy or a $100-an-hour guy, you've got a sick individual that needs to be, that needs your care and attention. So my motion then would be to delete lines 13 and 14.
Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just that we understand, though, the implications here, that particular line one on page 11 is referencing salaried employees, and salaried employees are not hourly employees. And so if you take FMLA for three months as a salaried employee, you're still entitled to your compensation. You're not getting paid by the hour. And so, this would, in essence, be a little different from an employee who's an hourly employee, in the overall intent of the bill, because the intent is to minimize as much as possible the out-of-pocket impact on the enterprise. And so, if you're a salaried employee, technically, this is paid leave that you'll be able to take with this FMLA provision. And so, again, this is one of those things where perhaps we might want to consider how it may mirror the federal statute. Another thing to consider also with respect to this language is that, you know, when you're talking about these particular kinds of employees, we have to remember that this entire section is, it comes together in that it basically says that the employer may refuse to reinstate the employee if all of the following apply, not just one, but all three, okay? One, they're salaried, and the highest paid 10%. Two, the refusal is necessary to prevent substantial and grievous economic injury to the operations of the employer. And then three, the employer notifies the employee of the intent to refuse reinstatement at the time the employer determines the refusal is necessary. So, I look at this as, okay, let's say, you know, I'm the Bank of Guam, right? And I have, you know, five senior vice presidents, and the board recently appointed a new president, and four of the five senior vice presidents are all mad about it, and so they're all gonna take FMLA for three months, and the entire organization's going to suffer, because our senior management is fighting internally, and we don't know what we're going to do in order to keep the operation running for these three months, and it's going to cause chaos unless they fire that new CEO. I mean, there's all kinds of drama that can happen with that. What this basically does is it gives that employer that stopgap to be able to say, "You know what? Yeah, these are high-level executives, this is a whole bunch of silly fighting, infighting here, it's gonna collapse the entire enterprise if we don't do something. No, you're not, you guys wanna do that, you're not coming back." Okay? That's something that we need to still be mindful of, because if that were to happen, God forbid, because, you know, I got my word experience at the Bank of Guam, I think it's a great company, but I'm just using that as an example. That's possible with this bill. And not only that, but those very same executives would still be getting compensated for pulling that stunt. So, you know, for me, the intent of the bill is for us to afford our part-time, hourly employees the opportunity to still be able to come back and keep their job if they need to go and take care of a sick loved one. This thing kinda covers it on the opposite extreme, where if you're a high-level, highly compensated employee, and you're critical to the operations of the organization, you're not going to be able, it's possible that you will not get reinstated as a result of this. And so this particular amendment, it kinda gets, it kinda, you know, affects all of that, and it, again, it does, this one provision does kind of change up the situation, because if you're a salaried employee taking FMLA, you're still getting paid that salary, you're still getting paid that salary even though you're not on the job. So that's just something for us to consider. I wanted to kinda put that information out there as we weigh the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the Tom Adet amendment, any senator wish to be heard? On the Tom Adet amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Is there any objection to the Adet amendment? Any objection to the removal of line 13 and 14? There's one objection. All those, there being an objection, all those in favor of the Adet amendment, please indicate by raising their hand. Five. Motion fails. Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? On the main motion? On the main motion, any senator wish to be heard? With the understanding that if Speaker Wampat has any major objections or issues, that we'll be able to bring this back up, but otherwise, I'll allow you to close and send it down.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't have much to say, but thank you to the body for deliberating, and I think would some of the amendments made it stronger. I'd also like to add Senator Uggan as a cosponsor, make a motion to add him. I asked him before he left.
To add Senator Uggan?
Yes.
On the motion to send the bill down? Any objection to sending the bill down? Thank you. I believe... The next on the agenda, just for the... Senator Rodriguez, Bill 249.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, move to place Bill 249-33 on the third reading, be allowed to briefly discuss the bill.
Is that substituted, or is there a substitution to it? No? Just the bill as introduced?
Yes.
Okay. Any objection? Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, thank you to your committee for having a hearing on this and issuing the committee report on Bill 249. Mr. Speaker, Bill 249 really is really very simple. It reaffirms an existing law that was passed in 2008. As a matter of fact, Mr. Speaker, six of those same senators, six of our leaders in 2008 are colleagues with us in this body here today. This legislation, Mr. Speaker, seeks to mandate the payment of compensation benefits of animal control officers of the Department of Agriculture as provided pursuant to public law 29-105. And just to give a brief history, Mr. Speaker, of how this has transpired, in 2008, there was an initiative by this body to reevaluate certain law enforcement and public safety positions within the government of Guam. These certain positions were clearly listed in this piece of legislation, which became public law 29-105. It mandated that the officers of the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, the Department of Corrections, Port Police, Customs and Quarantine, Airport Police, Parks and Rec, Department of Agriculture, DYA, and the Attorney General's Office, that a review be made, and that the individuals that hold the positions of law enforcement and public safety within these departments receive this 40% increase in their pay. In an effort, our leaders during that time, Mr. Speaker, in an effort to not make this such a burden on the community, that it laid out a mechanism to where this 40% would be provided to law enforcement and public safety personnel within a time period. And so for the others, the others in the other departments that I've just mentioned, were all provided this benefit pursuant to law. For some reason, the Department of Agriculture animal control officers were left out in this mix. Recently, or about a year ago, one of the employees who were affected by this, the Department of Agriculture, took this case to the Civil Service Commission. In the Civil Service Commission, there was an agreement that was made, that that case would be dismissed, and the management of agriculture, the government essentially had agreed that they would follow the law, follow public law 29-105. However, that, again, never happened. Even prior to that case being, or I don't know if it's prior or maybe after, there was an opinion from the Attorney General's Office, Attorney General Lenny Rapadas at that time, one of his deputy assistant attorney generals issued an opinion, guidance, that basically stated that, yes, these Department of Agriculture animal control officers are, should be deemed as eligible law enforcement and public safety personnels, and are entitled to the benefit that public law 29-105 had provided. And so here we are now, Mr. Speaker, in... And so here we are now, Mr. Speaker, in trying to move this issue forward and putting closure to this issue. Public law 29-105 even went as far as appropriating the sums needed for each and every department for this law to be able to be carried out. And unfortunately for Department of Agriculture, that this law was not pursued. How and where those funds that were appropriated for fiscal year 2009, when this was supposed to start, where it went and how it was addressed, we don't know, Mr. Speaker. And so, I'm asking our body to please put finality and closure to this. From 2008 to this date, Mr. Speaker, there has been no effort to remove the animal control officers from this pay grade that public law 29-105 had called for. And so, here we are in our attempt to move it forward. There was a fiscal statement, a fiscal note that was provided and a subsequent updated fiscal statement that was provided by BBMR that for the periods of October 1st, 2009, which was the start date of this law, up to the end of this fiscal year, fiscal year 2016, the financial impact would be about $293,000. And that would be to ensure that the officers that were, you know, that are eligible for this are able to be compensated. We know through this financial impact statement from BBMR that the Department of Agriculture is projecting a lapse of about $200,000 with a full release of the 15% reserve for this fiscal year, creating a $93,000 shortfall if we were to pay the full amount to all these employees. And so that's why there's a provision in this Bill 249, Mr. Speaker, that allows the government to make incremental payments to these officers, although it's not an ideal situation that we're, that we need to make these payments incrementally. It's a tool that we're providing the government to, you know, recognizing that the funds that would be needed will be short $93,000 if we were to make the full payment. But that, Mr. Speaker, does not, should not stop us from moving forward. The government has done an injustice to these individuals and so it's just, it's time and it's the right move for us to be able to put closure to this. And so I'm asking my colleagues to please support this measure. And before I close, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to add Senator Tina Rose Munya-Barnes as a cosponsor of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any senator wish to be heard on the main motion, Bill 249 as introduced? Any senator wish to be heard? Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I was the committee chairman to which this bill was originally referred to before it was pulled from my committee by a majority vote of, by a majority vote of members of the Committee on Rules. The reason why I did not move this bill forward, Mr. Speaker, in my committee is because the funding was not adequate to meet the appropriation for us to be able to meet this obligation. You know, one of the things that is very difficult to manage in this body is what we want to do and what we're able to do, how we're able to reconcile, how to move things forward. One of the things that's just been disturbing me over the years, Mr. Speaker, is that we've seen time and time again appropriations happen, fiscal notes come through, we're going to see it multiple times in this session, you know, saying that there's no fiscal impact. I've never ever seen at any given point in my time here as an elected official, any financial person in the government from BBMR or DOA ever come out and actually say, yeah, you know, taking that action is going to put us into an obligation that we can't afford. And yet, we've seen the news about the deficits that we've been accruing year in and year We'll have oversight hearings and we'll call in the financial professionals and, you know, we'll get this dance between, oh, I don't have that information in front of us to, oh, I'll get back to you later. And it's not until the audit comes out when we find out, oh, yeah, FY 2015 had a $30 million Now, when we approach these spending measures, I don't think there's a single person among us who wants to be the guy who's going to say no to people, especially when a case can strongly be made that the obligation is owed. Nobody wants to be the one to say no. But for me, Mr. Speaker, as much as we would want one plus one to equal three, it does And if we don't have the funds to be able to move something forward at this particular time, then we need to prioritize our spending in order to make sure the funds are available for us to meet the obligations that we want to incur. Now, this bill takes us down a whole new road because now not only are we acquiescing to the fact that we don't have enough money for it, but we're saying we're going to go ahead and pay it in installments. We're giving out a pay adjustment on layaway. Are our teachers paid equivalent to the nation? No. Should we perhaps give them a pay adjustment on layaway? Are our police officers paid the equivalent of the nation? No. Should we perhaps give them a pay adjustment on layaway? The only ones who've gotten a pay adjustment, not only we are, are us in this room. The only way that we're going to get ourselves to a place where we are not operating fiscal year in, fiscal year out, in a deficit, except for those years where we go to the bond market and borrow hundreds of millions of dollars, is if we stop and we say, yes, this is an obligation. Give me some time, let's get the money together and let's fund it when the funding's available. That was my commitment to this group back in February. To the multiple groups that got, that were on bills that got pulled from my committee, that was my commitment. Everybody wants their money and everybody wants it now. And these kind of bills represent a willingness of this body to acquiesce even when we can't afford to. And what just sets it all up and puts us into these kind of situations, Mr. Speaker, is that, you know, that goes all the way back to what we did, the pay raises for elected and appointed officials under the premise that the finances were fixed. We got letters coming down here from the administration saying the finances are fixed. And, you know, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Speaker, but the financial realities are far from fixed. I've been, I've been taking really hard positions the last couple of months, having to say no, 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 on new additional spending measures above and beyond what we budgeted for. I'll even get those things screenshotted and shared on Facebook to completely misrepresent my position on issues, but it's necessary. It's necessary, Mr. Speaker, because if we don't do it today, if we're not, as individuals, so bold, who can we ever expect to be? It's going to be some other elected official's problem? Senator so-and-so will be the one to get up and do it because I'm not going to be the one? At some point in time, one of us has got to be Senator so-and-so and, God willing, a majority of us. This is an obligation. We need to meet this obligation. Let's do it when we have the funds. We have all kinds of obligations. Let's meet all those obligations before we go and add more and add more and add more. And if we can do that, and based on my evaluation of the numbers and the growth rate of our revenue and some of the prospects we have over the horizon, if we can just have just a little bit more discipline for maybe two, four, at the most six years, we can turn this entire ship around. We can turn this entire ship around. But if we continue the practice of appropriating just because the projections look rosy, which by the way, they always look rosy and then turn out to be a deficit when the audit comes in, but if we continue that practice, or if we now begin the new practice of pay adjustments on layaway, we're going to continue borrowing ourselves under obligations that we don't have enough money to fund. I feel for these guys. They got left out. It was a disservice going back to 2009. We've got to make good. And that's why we've got to prioritize our spending. That's why we shouldn't have given ourselves and other appointed officials raises. And that's why, Mr. Speaker, you know, it's tough, it's rough, it's uncomfortable, but it's necessary and I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to vote no on this bill. I would prefer that we send it back to committee, but we've been down that road already. I would prefer that we're able to wait until we have the resources, but that's apparently, you know, not the case at this juncture. But I guess, you know, we have to at some point be Senator so-and-so.
Thank you, Senator. Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? If not, I will recognize the sponsor for, to close, Anna.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you to our colleague who just finished speaking. Mr. Speaker, the former speaker spoke about this being an obligation and it really is. We can't cut it any other way. It's an obligation that needs to be paid. We can't go, you know, in our own households when we have a power bill or water bill, we can't tell them, tell the, you know, we can't tell GP or GWA, can't tell our cable service provider, you know what, can you wait until I get my finances in order and then I'm going to pay you? You can't. You get cut off. These people, Mr. Speaker, have been working day in and day out. The leaders, our previous leaders, six of them who are here today in this hall, had the wisdom to include these individuals as law enforcement and public safety officers and were supposed to be given the benefits that our leaders had set out. We didn't do that. Our government didn't do that. And the most responsible thing to do now, Mr. Speaker, is to put closure to this, whether it is to remove them from that law, which to this date, from 2008 to today, 2016, no one has done it. It's easy to stand up here, Mr. Speaker, and decry and complain about everything that comes through here that deals with finances and having to pay back obligations, going back to these pay raises that were given to public officials, to elected officials and government-wide that we've done here before. But to not offer any solutions, Mr. Speaker, now that is unconscionable. To not stand and say, yes, this is an obligation, perhaps this is the way we're going to do it, this is the way we're going to find money to bring in more money, more revenue to this government, to not do any of that and to just continue to stand, Mr. Speaker, and decry everything and have no solutions, that is unconscionable. And so, again, I ask my colleagues to please support this measure and put final closure to this issue that's been lingering. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. There's two things I guess I have to do. Was there a motion to add a cosponsor? The motion first to add Senator Tina Munya-Barnes as a cosponsor, there being no objection. On the motion to send the bill down? Thank you. Next bill on the agenda is Bill 291. Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we place Bill Number 291-33COR in the third reading file and that I'd be allowed to discuss the bill briefly.
Thank you. That would be the Bill 291 as substituted?
As substituted by the committee on, yes, as substituted by the committee.
Okay. Any objection? Hearing none.
Mr. Speaker, Bill Number 291-33, the Uniform Deployed Parents' Custody and Visitation Act protects our community's military parents' custody and visitation rights in the event of a deployment. The goal of this bill is to facilitate expeditious and fair disposition of cases involving the custody rights of a member of the military. The Uniform Deployed Parents' Custody and Visitation Act is intended to facilitate resolution of the child custody issues that arise when a parent is deployed for military or other national service on orders that do not permit that individual to bring his family members along. This act seeks to ensure that parents who serve their country are not penalized for their service while still giving adequate weight to the interests of the other parent and, most importantly, the best interest of the child. So to clarify, this bill applies to military parents who are in active duty, National Guard and Reserves, who may be single, divorced, or remarried and have custody or visitation rights with their minor children. This bill will come into play when a service member is deployed for a period lasting between 90 days and 18 months and again when they're not permitted to bring their family members with them. Deployments could include anything from a temporary military assignment to Cuba, for example, or Afghanistan, or onboard a ship headed towards the South China Sea. It could also include something like basic training or other lengthy military training and professional development courses that a service member may have to attend without the family members. So we may wonder why have a uniform law. A uniform act is one that seeks to establish the same law on a subject among the various jurisdictions. It simplifies individuals' lives and facilitates business transactions by providing consistent rules and procedures from state to state. This Uniform Deployed Parents' Custody and Visitation Act provides a uniform, expeditious, and fair disposition of cases involving the custody rights of a member of the military. And so the more states and territories that adopt this law, the easier it'll be on our military families because they know they will be playing with the same set of rules no matter where their duties take them. At present, there are 12 states that have adopted and there are three pending this uniform act, not including Guam. I can go into a very overview about the five essential parts of this bill. In Article 1, it applies generally to custody matters of service member, including noticing provisions requiring parents to communicate about these custody and visitation issues as soon as they are aware of the deployment. It also integrates with the Uniform Child Custody Jurisdiction and Enforcement Act to declare the residence of the deploying parent not changed by reason of the deployment. And it also provides that when imminent deployment is not an issue, a court may use, may not use a parent's past deployment or possible future deployment issues as a negative factor in determining the best interests of the child during a custody proceeding. The other, the following Articles 2 and 3 apply to custody issues that arise on notice of and during deployment. Articles 2 sets out an easy procedure for parents who agree to a custody arrangement to resolve these issues by an out-of-court agreement. In the absence of a parent reaching an agreement on their own, Article 3 provides for an expedited resolution of the custody arrangement in court. It also allows the court, at the request of a deploying parent, to grant the service member's portion of a custodial responsibility in the form of caretaking authority... member's portion of a custodial responsibility in the form of caretaking authority to an adult who is either a family member or with whom the child has a close and substantial relationship when it serves the child's best interests. And then the following article governs the termination of the temporary custody arrangement following their return. It contains a set of procedures that apply when parents mutually agree that a temporary custody agreement shall be terminated, another set applies when the parents mutually agree that a temporary custody, custody order should be terminated, and a third set applies when the parents reach no agreement regarding the termination of temporary custody arrangements and require a court to resolve whether to return the child to permanent custody arrangements is appropriate. And Article 5 contains an effective date provision, a transition provision, and boilerplate What this bill is, and I encourage my colleagues to give it full consideration, um, this measure I was introduced to by a judge from Oregon who had worked very zealously in promoting this adoption of a uniform custody law across the, the nation. And what I want to emphasize is just the, the process that went into creating this uniform custody law and why it is important that, that we have something that, uh, we can rely on those military parents. And it's a very, it's a very specific, uh, situation and it's a very temporary situation, but it is, it is nonetheless a very impactful matter that affects the livelihoods of not only the, the, the family members, but the ability of the service member to perform their duties without distraction and without fear of losing, um, a status upon return from deployment. This, um, law was very carefully crafted by a committee that was, that consisted of five law school professors. It went before the Uniform Law Commission for two readings in 2011 and again in 2012. It passed and was presented to the American Bar Association of Delegates in February 2012, passed muster, and the Board of Governors of the American Academy of Matrimonial Lawyers passed a resolution in November 2014 urging states to adopt this uniform law and recommending that its chapters support passage of this act in their states. Um, it, it had been challenged in, in a couple of states for unconstitutionality and, um, was rejected by the appellate courts in Alabama and Colorado. So I, I would like to encourage my, um, my colleagues to please give this its favorable consideration. We have received a lot of positive, um, input from one attorney specifically on Guam who deals with family law as a specialty. And we also have memorandums, uh, supporting the passage of this from not only the Uniform Law Commission, but also from, um... Pardon me, I am, um... I'm looking for the, um, the memorandum of support, but, uh, because it is not readily available, uh, it is in the, it is in the committee report and I will refer to it, uh, in my closing statement. Mrs. Speaker.
I thought at the, at the hearing that there was some additional support, I thought, from the guard.
Yes, from the guard, but also from, um, excuse me, I'll, I'll get it in a second.
Okay.
Yes.
Any senator wish to be heard on the, on Bill 249? Any senator wish to be heard on Bill 249? I mean, I'm sorry, 291. On the main motion? On the main motion, Senator Torres's bill on the Uniform Custody and Visitation of Deployed Military Parents? Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, um, Mr. Speaker, just a question to the author of the legislation, recognizing that, um, and if she, the author could yield and I'll pose the question, uh, quite simply, does this in any way affect, recognizing in the islands, there are times that we have the poxay, the care of the child from the grandparents or even from the aunties and uncles. So does this in any way, um, affect that relationship, you know, or that ability for the grandparents or the aunties and uncles to continue, um, the care of the child?
Senator?
What this bill contemplates is the best interest of the child and it actually, um, there are many scenarios that have, that have been contemplated, but with regard to, to custody of a third person, it does provide that, that if a child is in a situation where it is deemed that the, the custody should remain, uh, for example, the child is living with a parent who is also living either in the same household with grandparents or is, uh, in close proximity to the grandparents where they have a, a normal and usual caretaking role for that child, it can, it, this law provides that the, the, the parents can agree to keep the status where the child can remain in the custody of the grandparents. So in other words, in the same type of household environment when that parent is deployed. And if that involves the, um, the, the primary care by the grandparent or some significant other adult who has a normal, um, role in, in the upbringing of the child, um, and care of the child, then that can be maintained. And that was, that is what this bill does, is it doesn't, it, it allows for those scenarios where the best interest of the child can be considered by the court or by both parents. And, uh, and this, of course, is, is the, the parents of, that have custody and maintaining a degree of normalcy and best circumstances for the child. I hope I've answered the, uh, the question adequately.
Senator Blas, did that satisfy your question? Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 291? On Bill 291, on the main motion, any senator wish to be heard? I see question being raised as to the quorum being present.
This is a pretty lengthy bill for consideration and I ask, it is close to the lunch hour, sir. In fact, we, we can go in, at this point, just take a recess for lunch and come back and finish up this bill.
All right. We'll recess until 2:00.